...by the Commissioner of Education. The first rating has been evolving in recent years. The Commissioner of Education is required to evaluate the first every three years and he can modify those indicators to improve the effectiveness of the rating. Starting in 1516, the rating indicators changed to 15 indicators that you'll see shortly, and prior to that, there were seven indicators. Some of those new indicators that were added were current assets to current liability ratio and the long-term liabilities to total asset ratio. And the maximum points changed from 30 to 100 points. The rating we're going over tonight is for the 1718 rating year, and that goes over and uses 1617 financial data. So this is not, the first rating is a year behind, and it's not using the data from the annual financial report that the Board approved last month in November, which was for the school year 1718. So there is a lag. The rating matrix shows that if a district receives 90 to 100 points, they would receive a superior rating. The 15 indicators that TEA considers important can be broken down to critical solvency and financial competency. There are five indicators in that critical area, and they have yes or no answers for the questions, and you must answer yes to all of those questions in order to pass the first. The remaining 10 questions relate to solvency and financial competency and have a maximum point score of 10 points. For the critical indicators, the district received yes answers to all five indicators. We filed our annual financial report timely. We received an unmodified opinion. We were compliant with all debt agreements. We made timely payments to TRS, IRS, and other governmental agencies. And we had unrestricted net asset balance at June 30th of 17 greater than zero. For the solvency indicators, we received a maximum score for cash on hand. The district received four of 10 points for the current asset to current liability ratio. And the district received eight points for the long-term liabilities to total assets. And we received the maximum points for general fund revenues exceeding general fund expenditures. We also received the maximum points for debt coverage ratio and the district's administrative cost ratio. The district's administrative cost ratio was .0709 compared to .1105 for districts with ADA greater than 10,000. And since the district did not have a 15% decline in student to staff ratio over three years, we received the maximum points for indicator number 12. For the financial competency indicators, we received the maximum points for all three indicators. We filed the PMS report based on the annual financial report timely and with less than a 3% variance. The annual financial report was free of material noncompliance for grants. And the adjusted repayment schedule, we didn't have an adjusted repayment schedule due to an overallocation of the foundation school program. So in total, the district received 92 points, which achieved a superior achievement, which is the highest rating the district could receive.
Okay, all right, thank you, Kelly. So we're going to talk a little bit about how FIRST has been a transition. We mentioned the move from seven indicators to 15, and you can see when that happened. And so where we're currently at is the, in the, it's white there with A being the superior rating. So this is the first year that 90 is the threshold. Everything looks the same, except if you look at that, the 1516 section, you could get superior achievement just with seven, a score of 70. Actually, if you go even farther back, when I first got into school business in 2003, I mean, it was just, it was very, very easy to be able to get a superior rating. And so they have tightened up things, which is, you know, I certainly think is a good thing. And having a superior rating, you know, trying to get the score, you know, above 90 is very important. So from a future perspective, you can see that it's going to, once we're looking at 1920 data, so there's a while before we get there, they are going to increase the number of indicators, and so it'll be the same scoring, though. You will have to get a 90 to get to that. So let's talk a little bit about that. So we have some concerns, and so if you look at indicator seven and eight, where we got, where we didn't get the full amount of points. The full amount of points we didn't get because we didn't, really, it's because we have our commercial paper program. Most school districts, whenever they have an active debt management program, they will issue money right away, and they'll have that money, and it'll sit, it'll sit at a bank, and so it's on their balance sheet as a current asset. I mean, it's just cash, it's just sitting there. And so you're, but you're also paying debt on it. And so because of our commercial paper program, we're not, we're not doing that, we're not issuing money early. And so we saved the district almost 7,000, 7 million since we implemented that program. And so we had a discussion, actually, you know, after we created these slides, I actually talked with Leah Lopez, the Assistant Deputy Commissioner at TEA, about the, the impact of having the commercial paper program. And he was familiar with it because he, at Austin ISD was where he spent a couple of years when he was a school district administrator, and he remembered, you know, having the commercial paper program at that time. But he was honest with me, says, well, we haven't thought through that, so we're going to have to think about that a little bit more. Because if we're able to, you know, save 7 million, and then you have some of the new indicators, and we're not worried about any of the indicators, but if we lose three more points, we could be in a situation where we could get a B rating, but we could be saving our taxpayers 7-plus million dollars. And so I'd rather save the money, but, you know, hopefully, we'll still be able to get a positive rating. They're going to take that into consideration, but not, but not having that cash, not issuing cash that way definitely impacts the current asset ratio and the, the long-term liabilities to total assets. And so, anyway, we've, we've spoken with them about it, we've talked to folks at Region Four and TASBO, and so we know that they're going to, they're going to think about that. Now, the immediate problem, though, is actually with indicator five. If you remember, in indicator five was about the, the net asset ratio, I mean, well, the net, net asset balance, the, the overall balance. And because of the new GASBY statements and the financials that you saw last time, we have a negative net position because we're being forced to record our entire TRS liability when we're not the ones paying for TRS. And so this is, you know, complies with the governmental standards, and so hundreds of districts, you know, throughout the state are showing it that way. Actually, I think all of them would be, I'd surprised, I'd be surprised really if any of them has a, have a positive net position after that. And so they've recognized that, and they have only recently come, it was the week before last, where we got an email from them that we will be able to add back then as part of our ratio. Because if we were looking at 1718 data, without any other rule change, we would fail, all of these other districts would fail simply because of the GASBY change. But this is still at a time where we're getting a double A-plus rating from, from the financial rating agencies. So, you know, you can see the disconnect there on the, on that net position. And so we, we are confident that they are going to change that ceiling indicator for number five. We haven't seen this in print beyond an email. They're, they're working through, working things on their website and the training sessions that they have, so that's, that's really still, still in flux. So until we see it that way, we're going to keep, just keep pressing and reminding them that folks will be failing that unless they make that change. So some of the other changes that we're going to have, when we go to the 15 to 20 indicators, they're going to look at how we, when you look at our final budget, they're going to compare actuals to budget, make sure there's less than a 10% variance. They're going to be comparing our actual ADA with what we've submitted, whenever we, whenever we submit projections. They want to make sure that we're talking to the Board about the property value lag. And we've had a whole slide on that in some of our presentations where we talk about how if our CPTD is growing at a different rate at our, at our regular property value, how that impacts the financials in a significant way. So they want to make sure that all school districts are talking about that, so it's actually going to be a new FIRST indicator. Also, they're actually going to be talking about the ratio of debt assessed value, and so that's something we, we scored very favorably on, we're not, we're not concerned about that. And then just making sure that we have all the finance, proper financial information on the website. Of course, we have all that now. Some of the other items that they'll have as ceiling factors, if you have a material weakness in internal controls, which we haven't had, it, I don't, I don't know if that's happened here at this district. The highest you can get would be a C if that happened. If you have a PMS data variance, the highest you could get would be a B. And then if we didn't discuss the property values, the highest we could get would be a B as well. And then also, if there's a, a larger increase on the, in decrease, excuse me, in fund balance, then the highest you could get is a B. But in looking at all of the 20 indicators, we're very confident that we're going to, you know, still be on track to get a superior rating as we always have. We just need to make sure that, I mean, hopefully, they'll be able to tweak things to make sure we're not getting dinged for the commercial paper program. We're one of only, I think, three school districts now that have an active commercial paper program. And, and using that, especially with our bond programs, is very significant, and we expect to continue to save us quite a bit. So there are some required disclosures that, that we do have to go through and impose on the side, and so, you know, we, we have to disclose if there's any gifts over 250, or if there's any business transactions with the district. Of course, you can see that, that none of our board members have accepted, or Dr. Dupree have accepted gifts of that kind, same with the business transactions, so there's nothing to disclose there. And then we also have to disclose the expense reimbursements, you know, for the, for the, for the travel and the trainings. So, you know, Dr. Dupree required, goes to required trading to keep up his CPA license, and there are other things that we go to, you know, throughout the year, and the other events that the board members have. So this is something that we have to include on the website as well. So, that's it. We're trying to be short and sweet with this, be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Bassett and Mrs. Slacks. Go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mr. Bassett, the first question I have is on item number seven, and that is, that was on page eight. What was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school districts sufficient to cover short-term debt? Now, our commercial paper program that you referenced, that is essentially a short-term loan, if, as I recall, that allows us, when we, when we have a bond program underway, to use a short-term loan instrument to get some of these projects kick-started, and so we don't have to sell as many bonds right off, right off the bat, which we're paying interest on. So you're telling me that because we have this commercial paper program, which has saved $7 million over how many years?
I think that's in the, the three years, yeah, three years.
Three-year period. That we're, effectively, we're being penalized by that because the TEA failed to take into account, they're penalizing us for actually being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And as I recall, when I got on the Board in 2010 and up until last year, our INS tax rate did not increase at all. In fact, we actually lowered it four cents two years ago, I think, 2016. And so I really hope that, that they're able to correct that in the future, because that will give a more accurate picture. And so just between you and me, I'm going to add the four points back in, so I'm saying we're getting a 96 and not a 92.
Okay, yes, sir.
Then on the GASBY, I'm not sure, what does GASBY stand for?
Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
So you're, you're telling me that the TEA is requiring every school district in the state to report the entire teacher retirement system liability that we have, even though they're responsible for a portion of it, but we've got to carry it on our books, and, which seems unfair.
Yeah, so that, that gets back to our discussion last month, whenever the Board was approving the, the audit of the financial statements, when Chris Bro, our auditor, was here, and he was walking folks through, through that calculation, he was showing what our financials would look like with, with the, the adjustment in there and without the adjustment, and we'd be very positive, over 200 million positive if we had that, if we didn't have that adjustment. So they recognize that, that is something that, that's critical for FIRST, and I do think that they will change that. But only because they're just now seeing those financials and the impact of those in, in the CAFERS that people are approving in this timeframe, that's, now, now they're reacting to it. But, you know, fortunately, it's not something that, that they're not able to make a clear change before we assess the 1718 data next year.
Okay, although they can't wait to go from 15 indicators to 20, so...
Well, that'll be, that'll be for the 19, the 1920, the year, 2019-20 data. It'll be, so it's going to be another couple of years until we get into those 20 indicators. We just wanted to let you know because we, we, we're, we're forward-thinking here, and we want to just tell you what those future indicators will be, so that if, if we'd saw any concern with them, we'd be able to talk about it in case we wanted to do any kind of legislative advocacy or anything along those lines.
Okay. Well, on page 14, and then I'll probably stop there. So future change is to make sure that, that you inform us and board members can discuss property values and the funding lag within 120 days of adopting budget, and it seems like that's all we have been talking about. So I wonder if they're going to brief the legislature on that as well? Because I really think they need a primer in it.
I would agree, sir.
So Governor Abbott, if you're listening, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. I'd like to, I'd like to echo some of the comments that my colleague, Mr. Rice, made, particularly on the commercial paper, and, you know, it saved our taxpayers quite a bit of money, saved us money. So I appreciate you guys bringing that to our attention and advocating, and if there's any advocacy that we as trustees need to do, we hope you'll let us know that so that we can do that in a timely way. Because we obviously need to keep having these discussions so that we're not penalized for doing the right thing. So I have a question with regard to indicator number nine. So indicator number nine talks about the general fund revenues equal or exceeding expenditures. So right now, we've got a budget that we've approved that's a deficit budget. So does that, when we end the year in a deficit position, does that penalize us in that category, then? Is that what that does?
No, it doesn't, because you, if, as long as we're adhering to our own policy, and that's having 90 days worth of fund balance, you know, three months of fund balance, we'll be well above it, because the threshold is actually 60 days. So if, if a school district has, you know, just over two months, even if they do lose money in a, in a given year, they'll still, they'll still get the, the points on this.
So long as we have the right amount of fund balance. And then was there something in one of these that talked about using a certain percentage of the fund balance? Was that, did I?
That was in a future, that was one of the future indicators.
That's one of the future indicators. So if we're using, so, so even right now, in number nine, we'd be okay, but perhaps in the future, we'd be penalized for using fund balance to cover a deficit, so...
Right, so that's where you get to that last one. You want to make sure that your change in unassigned fund balance, that average over three years is less than a 25% decrease, so 25%, you know, is, is the, the, yeah, so...
All right, well, there's a lot of things to think about, so I guess these are things we have to start beginning to think about when we're, we're preparing the budget and, and going over the budget in the spring.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that it seems like the TEA has a little bit too much time, and therefore money on their hands, if they're coming up with all these crazy things. Because I'm kind of curious, how are they going to actually monitor all 1,100 school districts to make sure that, that their CFO is telling them about the CPTD values and whatnot? Are they going to be watching all the videos and, I mean...
I'm not sure how they're going to, I mean, I think what they're, I don't know how they're going to do that one. The rest of it is pretty much automated, you know, through the CAFERS that are submitted. That's why this is a year behind. I mean, the CAFER that was just approved, you know, by the Board, obviously, they, they wouldn't have. Most school districts are still in the August 31st, and so there's going to be another three months. So TEA only has and is able to analyze things, you know, for, for 1617. So they try to do as much as they can on an automated basis. How they'll do that one, I mean, I, I know that, I had a conversation with the Commissioner about that, and I know that, that he said that that was a big deal when he was a board member at Dallas ISD. He saw how big of an impact it, it has, and you can have ups and downs, and, and so, I, I, but I, yeah, I don't know how they'll check compliance.
Sounds like we can find some budget cutting there, huh, in Austin?
Mr. Rice, did you have something to say again? Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it. Next is public comment on the FIRST rating. Do we have any public comment on the FIRST rating? All right. Hearing none, we will now move on to our attendance boundary update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, sir. As you know, this week, we're going to be having three community meetings on the scenarios that are being considered for boundaries for high schools and for the opening of Elementary 51. We wanted to present to the Board those scenarios so you'll be aware of what the community's going to be hearing at the community meetings the next three nights this week. Beth's going to kind of introduce this and kind of give you some background on how we got here. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on the boundary planning process since we last spoke at the October Board Workshop at Dulles High School. I'll give you an overview of the planning timeline, talk to you a little bit more in detail about the community engagement process, where we are currently. Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies is with us this evening, and he will go in-depth on the various boundary options for each of the two areas that we're planning for, and provide the information that will be shared this week online and to the public during community meetings. And then we'll talk at the end about next steps, immediate next steps and actions moving forward. So this is a timeline that takes us from November to January. And as you know, earlier this fall, we started the engagement process around attendance boundaries for Elementary 51 in the northwest portion of the district, around the Aliana Community, and to balance enrollment in the southeast portion of the district at the high school level. So right prior to the Thanksgiving break, we reached out to parents of students at the elementary level in proximity to the location of Elementary School 51, recruiting them to apply to serve as a member of a focus group. We also reached out to parents of high school students in high schools in the southeast portion of the district, asking for them to fill out an application to be considered to serve on a focus group. We are currently in the feedback phase. We've worked with the focus groups, so we're moving through December to prepare for January and February as our next steps. The focus group process, as I said, we began that recruitment process in November, and part of that was application process where we reviewed each application that came to us. It was based on objective criteria, there was, we asked for references, we checked references for the folks that submitted. And then we also made sure that there was representation geographically, and I'll give you an example of that. There's a community in proximity to where Elementary School 51 is located that is currently zoned to Lakeview Elementary. And because it is so very close to where Elementary School 51 is located, we, we knew we needed to have representation from that community. And so that's just one example of many, and how we looked at how geographically the membership of the about 20, 22-member focus group represented the particular areas of focus. We wanted to give members of the focus group an opportunity, once they were selected, to learn more about the process instead of jumping right into the focus group work. In the past, when we've done this, we started immediately with the focus groups, but based on some feedback that we've received through our planning processes, the boundaries and our facilities process, we established an orientation where we brought members of both of those focus groups together. We talked through Policy FC Local and how that drives or anchors the process. And we also set some expectations around their role so that they, the focus group members were very aware of and clear of their role as a focus group member, and that they were going to review some preliminary options, give feedback, that staff might use that feedback to refine the options, and then share with the larger community. And so they met, the Elementary School 51 group met once in November, the high school group ended up meeting twice, they requested a second meeting, and so they came to the table and met a second time. And both of these groups, through their just incredible dedication to questioning the process, questioning the, the data and the information, and providing input and perspective, not only did they create depth with the boundary options that you're about to hear about this evening, but they also created new boundary options based on that input and through that interaction in the focus group process. So as we move into this week, it's going to be a busy week, we're doing things, this is a slight change and improvement in the process. We are going to be providing the presentation online tomorrow, along with the survey. And if you'll remember, when we've done boundary planning in the past, we have provided that information after the community meetings. We'd like to give people an opportunity to, to receive consistent messaging and to be able to access the presentation, which will include the boundary options that Scott will review with you this evening, online beginning tomorrow through January the 2nd. Along with that is that online survey, so that when it closes on the 2nd, then we can gather all of that input, study every piece of it, and consider it as we possibly further refine the boundary options to bring to you for review in January and in February. Then after, or moving forward tomorrow, there's going to be a community meeting at Marshall High School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., beginning at 7:00 o'clock for each one of the presentations throughout the week, with the 12th being Travis and the 13th being Elkins. It will begin in the auditorium at the campus with a video presentation showing the boundary options and talking about the process, and then staff and Scott's team out in the cafeteria area of each school with boundary maps and blown up very large, so people can interact with those maps and talk to staff members, talk to Scott and his team, ask questions. We'll have iPads available so that folks can engage in the online survey at that time, or, you know, at their leisure on their cellular devices, however they best see fit to engage in that, so that we can consider all of the feedback that we're receiving. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Scott so that he can share more details with you about the boundary options. As you'll see, the focus groups are, we are presenting options, several options for each one of the scenarios, for Elementary School 51 and for balancing high school enrollment. You'll see several, several different options this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with the area on Elementary 51. I just want to briefly go over some of the feedback from the focus groups. Some things that we kind of heard consistently is that we'd like to see options where students attend his or her closest school. There are some scenarios where we add students to a school that would require an addition that is not necessarily funded yet, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a minute. But they'd like to see the addition come on those schools before the students arrive. They don't want to have portables. And so this is, you know, typical comments that we saw in this process, and also that they'd like to see additional capacity beyond what is currently funded in this area. This shows our current, our current map and boundaries, just for some reference points. This is the location of Elementary 51, it's located within the current Madden boundary. For some roads that we have on here, this would be 99, 1464, kind of goes up the middle here, and then West Airport is the, the current Travis-Austin line. We, you can't see them on this map, but we also have the planning units that show us how many students are currently enrolled in each planning unit, and these are from Passa, and then the five-year projection, the 10-year projection for each planning unit. So this is something that we utilize as we're going through this process. This is the, the current enrollment and utilization with the new design capacity. And so if we look at this, you can see, we've got our, our schools in the area, Holly, Lakeview, Madden, Neal, Oakland, Oyster Creek, Patterson, Pecan Grove, Walker Station, and of course, Elementary 51. This shows our utilization if we're, if we were to do no boundary changes. And so a school is considered underutilized if it's less than 80% of, of design capacity, and it starts to turn red if it's over 100% of design capacity. And so you can see, we have a lot of red here at the elementary level. This is Madden. Currently, if we weren't doing, if we didn't have any measures in place, it would be at 169%, and it's projected to go up to 227% by '28-'29. The important takeaway here is looking at the overall elementary capacity utilization in the area. We're still exceeded, we're still projected to exceed 100% of design capacity, even with the new construction of Elementary 51 and the additions at Madden and Neal. And so even with that, we're still going to need additional capacity in this area, you know, six to seven years out. Other things to note in this area is that we also have some projected overutilization at Bowie Middle School, and also Travis High School towards the end of the projection. Okay. This is just to give you kind of the schedule of, of what's coming online and at what time. And so this is the design capacity over time, and so we have an addition coming online at Neal in the 2020-21 school year. Lakeview, we will be rebuilt and opened in '21-'22. We have an addition coming online at Madden in the '22-'23 school year. And of course, Elementary 51 comes, comes on January of 2019. Just some key points before we go into the options. The design capacities do not include any portable buildings. The capacity at Elementary 51 plus the addition at Madden is not enough to serve all the students in the current Madden boundary long-term, and so we're going to have to utilize additional capacity to other schools. Due to the location of Oakland, we didn't make any changes to the boundary, but we're still showing overutilization, so we may need to consider a portal, or a portable replacement addition at that facility in the future. Again, we're projected to reach 101% of overall design capacity in '25-'26, so we, if we look at everything as an aggregate, so we're not going to be able to eliminate all the red on our charts 10 years out, but we want to push that out but we want to push that out as far as we can. And also keep in mind that planning is not a one-time event and that we have to consider additional capacity as we have future planning endeavors in this area. So here's option one. This is the current boundaries in the background. And so the current Madden boundary is in red. Neal is in green. Patterson is up here in yellow. Oyster Creek in yellow over here, and Lakeview is in brown over here. And so now I'm going to put the changes on, and they're really difficult to, to see with the existing boundaries. And so now I'm going to fade those back. And so in this particular option, this is option one, we would take kind of the area that's currently in Madden, east of 1464. It would get zoned to Oyster Creek. We have a section that is north of West Belfort, and I think, I believe there's a drainage ditch in here. It would get rezoned up to Patterson, and then Crockett, and then it would feed to Bush. And so this area, which currently feeds Bowie-Travis, would then go 100% Patterson-Crockett-Bush. Looking over to the Holly area, we have some neighborhoods here that are currently zoned to Patterson, which is projected to become overutilized. I believe it's Mission Sierra and Mission Trace. They would be rezoned to Holly, Hodges Bend, and then the change for this area is they would feed to Kempner. And so that would be 100% feeder for that area. Moving down to Madden, Madden would be in the green, in the red boundary here, and it would feed to Madden, Garcia, and Travis. And so this is a rather compact zone. The only area that we, we would have that would be bused to this school would be this area right here, north of West Belfort. Elementary 51 would be composed of, of the Madden boundary that is currently south of Airport, plus the addition of Chelsea Harbor. And so that would be the boundary for Elementary 51 in this option. Lakeview would, would retain its current boundary with the exception of Chelsea Harbor, and I believe it's Stratford Park, which would go to Oyster Creek in this option. We do have a growth area that, that kind of gave us some difficulty in this process. It's actually part of Harvest Green. It hasn't, it hasn't developed yet, but it will connect through to Pecan Grove. In this option, we have it zoned to Pecan Grove, and then we would need it, and actually, we would need an additional addition at Pecan Grove at some point. We also show an addition needed at Oakland. We have one more current feeder split that we have that we address in this issue. This is an area that is currently zoned to Oyster Creek, but then it is a small, or currently zoned to Fleming, but it is a small split that splits off to Garcia and Austin. And in this option, we would align it to Hodges Bend and Kempner. So in this option, we would have everything be a perfect feeder. Again, currently, we have a split at Patterson between Crockett-Bush and Bowie, and Bowie-Travis. It would be remedied in this option by everybody going to Patterson, Crockett, and Bush. Holly would feed Hodges Bend, and then to Kempner. Oyster Creek would go to Garcia and Austin. Madden would go to Garcia and Travis. 51 would go to Garcia and Austin. Lakeview would feed to Sugar Land and Kempner. And of course, Pecan Grove would feed Bowie-Travis. So here's our, our change details here. I'm not going to go through these again, but it just gives you a, a quick overview of the areas that change. Here's our data associated with this option. We show it with just the additions that we have planned, and I'll zoom in here in a minute. But you can see we still have some red bars here. And so these, these would include the additions that have been funded. That would be Madden and Neal, plus the additional construction of Elementary 51. So this is what it would look like if we put the additions on Oakland and Pecan Grove. And so you can see, 2024-25, we don't have any, you know, we have a, we have a light pink here in, I believe it's Walker Station, because we haven't made any changes to it, but overall, pretty good balance here. But we would need those, those additional additions that have not been funded yet. Other thing to note is we eliminated that dark red here at Bowie, and we also eliminated the red at Travis by zoning that area in Holly to Kempner. And so we better utilize the middle schools and the high schools and balance that in this option as well. Okay, moving on to option two. So here's our boundaries for option two. Starting at the top again, we split those two neighborhoods. I believe the, the northern one is Mission Sierra. It would feed to Patterson, Crockett, and Bush. And then we zone Mission Trace, which is south to Holly, Hodges Bend. But in this case, we leave the split intact. And so this, this portion of Holly would continue to feed into Travis, but they would feed into Hodges Bend because of its close proximity to Travis. And it also helps us relieve Bowie. If we look at the, what's left at the Madden boundary here in red, we have the northeast corner of 1464 and West Belfort. That section of Aliana zoned into Holly, Hodges, Hodges Bend, and Bush. What we also have done in this option, we've kind of drawn a line right here at the area that is right around Madden. This area that is currently developing is walkable to Madden, but in this option, it is zoned to Elementary 51. And the attempt was to get more of Madden in Madden, what was currently there, and zone some of the areas that were currently developing into the new schools. This would also have a split. This, this portion up here would feed to Elementary 51, Garcia, and Travis. And south of West Airport would feed 51, Garcia, and Austin. All of Madden in this scenario would go Garcia and Austin. And so that's a change as well. Oyster Creek would serve as this 1464 corridor school, and it would feed to Garcia and then Austin. We have the same change over here at Pecan Grove as option one. We do have another little change over here in Lakeview. And so we've taken that area that is kind of on the eastern portion of Oyster Creek and zoned it to Lakeview. And then Lakeview would then be 100% feeder to Sugar Land and then Kempner. But in order to make this work, we would have to have an addition on Lakeview as it is constructed, hopefully. And so again, that is a facility that was designed for 450 students with a core to expand to 600. And so in this case, that addition would be needed. We also had that same change to clean up that feeder split at Fleming. And so that area would continue to feed, would, would change and move to Hodges Bend and Kempner. Okay, moving on to the data for this one. So this would require three additions. But again, we have relatively, we have some good balance here, 23, by 2023-24, when we have everything online. But we would require those additions at Lakeview, Oakland, and Pecan Grove to help us get balance here. We also do, again, fix that issue with the overutilization at Bowie and Travis. I think our high schools are a little bit better balanced in this option than they are in option one. Okay, option three. This option is a little different. So looking at this, at this option, we leave the existing, the, the areas that are existing zone that really have students in them at Patterson, kind of as-is. But in order to do that, we would have to have an addition on Patterson. We zone that growth area that doesn't currently have any students. That would be west of 1464 to Holly, Hodges Bend, and Bush. Moving down here, looking at the red, this is what the boundary for Madden would look like. It would be a 100% no-transportation school. Everybody that would be in this zone would be within the parameters set by the district. What's different about this one is we have a, we have a DTAC zone for Elementary 51. And so all the area that is kind of north and, north of West Belfort and east of 1464 would feed to Elementary 51 and Travis. But know that these students would all be bused to Madden anyway. And so it's not like they're being zoned to a school that they would go to and they could walk to another. They would be transported in either scenario. We would then take the, the portion that is south of West Airport that is currently zoned to Madden right here. They would go to Oyster Creek, Garcia, and Austin. We would have a feeder split at 51. The northern portion would go 51, Garcia, and Travis. And the southern portion would go 51, Garcia, and Austin. And again, we still have that same, same change over here at Pecan Grove. In this case, we take that eastern portion of Oyster Creek, and it is actually zoned up to Fleming, and then Hodges Bend and Kempner. Lakeview's boundary remains completely unchanged. And so it would still continue to have a feeder split, and it would still need an addition in this scenario to maintain its current boundary. So there's our change areas. This option does require, again, we have three additions in this option. This option would also require an addition at, again, at Lakeview, actually, four additions in this option. Lakeview, Oakland, Patterson, and Pecan Grove. Again, you can see our, our utilization is pretty balanced here. We do have a little bit of overutilization projected at Bowie in the out years of the projection. And then at the high schools, we actually have a little bit of overutilization at Bush, but towards the end. Okay, here's option four. So in this option, we still have that, that same boundary that we had in option three for Patterson, and it would feed to Crockett and Bush. We have a little bit of a different boundary for, for Holly. We take all of Aliana that is currently north of West Belfort, and it would get zoned to Holly, Hodges Bend, and then it would continue to go to Travis as it is currently zoned. The other portion of Holly would go Hodges Bend, and then onto Bush. We have the same boundary for Madden, Garcia, and Travis, right here in the red, as we did in option three. Where this gets a little different as well is we took a different solution to look at that growth area that we have near Pecan Grove. In this scenario, we zone that area to 51. And so we would not require an addition at Pecan Grove in this option. We would zone those students to 51, and we would have a split. And so students that would be in this zone, west of 99, would go 51 Bowie-Travis. And then east of 99 would go 51 Garcia-Austin. What we also did in this option is we took that neighborhood, Chelsea Harbor. Again, this area right here is currently zoned to Walker Station, Windsor Estates. And so we would add Walker Station to make that boundary a little bit more contiguous. Chelsea Harbor, I, I misspoke. So Chelsea Harbor would go to Walker Station, Satarsha, and Austin in this option, but it would require an addition to do so. Our boundary for Lakeview in this option would be, you know, what is currently feeding into Lakeview that is in the Kempner zone, plus that eastern portion of Oyster Creek. And again, we make that, that feeder adjustment to remedy that split at Fleming to Hodges Bend and Kempner. We also pick up the east, eastern portion of Aliana right here. It would go to Oyster Creek. So there's our change areas. And here's our numbers when we have our four additions. So again, we've got some pretty good balance here, even at Bowie, and then the high schools. Okay. Do we want to pause to see if there were any questions for clarifications on the elementary options before we move on to high schools?
Thank you, Scott. I wanted to make a point while I have the chance, and we have an audience here, that to honor the process in place, we will be asking clarifying questions only. It's important for us as a board to let the focus groups do their work. And later on in the process, we will be presented with the focus group work, and at that point, we will provide our feedback as a board at that point. So I just wanted to make that point, that everyone understands that this is the first time in public that we're being shown this, and we want to honor the work that, that the focus group is doing.
Community, the community meeting feedback.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do we have any questions? All right.
Okay. Moving on to the, the high schools, again, these are the high schools in the southeast area of the district. And so we're talking Marshall, Willeridge, Hightower, Elkins, and Ridge Point. Some of the just prevalent discussions that we had in the focus group, you know, just some questions. Are we trying to balance utilization among the five schools for as long as possible? Or simply keep the enrollment down at Ridge Point until we can open high school number 12? And we have options that do both. We had a lot of discussion around programs and their potential impact on the options. There were talks of, of, you know, if we, if we have a large enrollment at schools that may have been historically underutilized, programs would naturally come with that higher enrollment. And so that's something that we talked through in the focus group. Some focus group members wanted to include more high schools than we had. Elkins, Hightower, Marshall, Ridge Point, and Willeridge. And some focus group members felt that the design capacities may have been a little too high. And so again, that's just kind of our, our general feedback that we had in that group. So here's our current boundaries. We have Ridge Point in the purple, Hightower in the green, Willeridge in the blue, Marshall in the gray, and Elkins in the yellow. Here's Route 6 coming down the middle right here, and then Fort Bentol Road kind of curves up like this. So here's our current enrollment and utilization with our new capacity numbers. I'm going to zoom in just a little bit so that we can see this. I'm going to focus on the, on the utilization numbers. And so at Ridge Point today, we're at 108%. In '22, '23, we're projected to be 141%, and then 191% in '28, '29. Looking at the overall enrollment, we're projected to be close to 5,000 students in the existing Ridge Point zone by '28, '29. Elkins starts to get up there towards the end, and Hightower does start to increase as it does have some growth currently in its zone. Marshall, 50% projected to increase slightly over time. Willeridge, 52% projected to decline slightly over time. If we look at our overall high school capacity with these five buildings, we're currently at 76%, projected to be 94% in the '28, '29 school year. I do want to just add a couple, a couple other points before we go into the options. We list the temporary capacity just for reference, but it has not included any of the numbers. And we also included the academies staying in their current locations and accounted for their current levels in the projected enrollment unless we otherwise noted. There's one of the options that we, that we talk about, maybe shifting those locations. And then, again, otherwise, unless it's noted, assume that those numbers are included in the enrollment. Again, just some key points to go over just before we go through the options. Per policy, any options would be phased in, beginning with ninth grade next year, and phased in over four years. Changes are, are shown being implemented, starting in, in 2018, '19, but we would not complete until '22, '23. Design capacities do not include any modulators. Again, current academy enrollment is reflected unless otherwise noted. Overall, the overall enrollment and combined capacity is projected to reach 94%. The projected growth in the Ridge Point feeder pattern accelerated since last year's projection. Ridge Point is now projected to have nearly 5,000 students in its current boundary by '28, '29. The soonest high school 12 can open is the fall of 2024. Okay, so here's option one. So here's our current boundaries, changes, and then here's the one that is actually legible. So in this option, we've got Elkins outlined in the yellow. And so Schiff Elementary, it would feed through Baines and then to Elkins. Ridge Point would be left with Sienna Crossing, Scanlon Oaks, and Leonetti. Again, Scanlon Oaks feeds into Baines. I'm sorry, Sienna Crossing feeds into Baines, and Scanlon Oaks, and Leonetti feed into Thornton. And then we would have Heritage Rose, which currently splits between Thornton and, and Baines, would feed 100% into Hightower. In order to make that work, Parks Elementary and Palmer, the portion that feeds into Hightower, would be zoned to Willeridge. Quail Valley Middle School, along with the portion of Palmer that currently feeds to Elkins, and so I believe this is Lake Olympia, would feed into Marshall. So here's the change areas for this option. And here's what it does to the numbers. So looking at this, looking at the projected enrollment in 2022, '23, every single high school would have more than 2,000 students zoned to it. We would not hit 100% at any schools until 2000, until 2028, '29. And so we'd have a good balance between all the high schools. If we look at the socioeconomics, at Elkins, they would go from 26% economically disadvantaged down to 12. Hightower would go from 58 to 61. I'll talk about that again in a minute. Marshall would go from 75 to 60. Ridge Point would go from 22 to 8. And Willeridge would go from 80 down to 70. We do show the slight increase here at, at Hightower, but I just think that we, it should be noted that with all those growth areas pointed to that school, I would, I would, I would guess that that would decline over time as we get through the projections. Our numbers are based on just the current student, student enrollment that we have. So what does this do? It balances utilization enrollment among the five schools over the next nine years without any school exceeding 100% of its utilization, its design, the, the design capacity. It moves large groups of students to avoid small, isolated cohorts. It has the highest utilization of Marshall and Willeridge throughout all of our options. And it positions the boundaries such that most of the future growth is pointed at Hightower. So likely, any boundary change, any boundary changes that would occur with high school 12 would be somewhat limited in this option. Okay, option two. Okay. So this option is a little different. So what this option does is this attempts to do the minimal amount of change to basically keep Ridge Point at its current levels until we can get high school 12 open. So what this option does is this attempts to do the minimal amount of change to basically keep Ridge Point at its current levels until we can get high school 12 open. And so in this option, Schiff Elementary School and the portion of Heritage Roads that currently feeds to Baines, so if it's on or off, or off or north of Route 6, it would feed to High Tower. So everything else would remain in Ridge Point. In order to make this work, the Medical Academy would have to come out of High Tower, and we have, we have it moving to Marshall, and the Digital Media Academy to Willow Ridge. And so in order to make enough room for all these students coming in from Ridge Point and maintaining the existing High Tower boundary, those are the programs that would have to move. So looking at the numbers, in this scenario, Elkins is unchanged. And so it would, you know, it would be near capacity, 102, 103% towards the end of the projection. High Tower, again, would phase out that academy and phase in those students from, from Ridge Point. And it is hovering right at capacity. Marshall would have an increase due to that program moving in slightly. We wouldn't see anywhere near the, the increase in enrollment there that we saw in option one. Same with Willow Ridge. But Ridge Point, we just kind of, we kind of bounce it off the top of, of where it is now. And so it'd be 108%, 106%, 105%. And then we'd be, you know, 105% again in 22-23. And then the year before, we'd be at 112%. And then when, the soonest we could have high school 12 open, that's when we would exceed 119%. But looking at the numbers, we stay below 3,000 until we can get to 24-25. And so again, this is kind of a minimalistic approach to just kind of cause the least amount of disruption and get us to the point where we can get that new high school open. So again, this impacts a minimal amount of students. To keep Ridge Point at its current levels, would require the movement of both the Medical and Digital Media Academies. It does not significantly increase the utilization at Marshall and Willow Ridge, and it would require significant boundary changes again when we open high school 12. Okay, so here's option three. This is another option to kind of rebalance enrollment. And so in option three, we would still have Schiff, split off through Baines into Elkins. Sienna Crossing, along with, again, that Baines portion of Heritage Roads, would feed into High Tower. Parks Elementary, along with this area that is currently undeveloped, that is part of Palmer. This area that's part of Palmer would feed into McAuliffe and Willow Ridge. Parks would continue to feed through Lake Olympia into Willow Ridge. In this option, Quail Valley, again, moves to Marshall. And then we, Lake Olympia in this option does stay at Elkins. So looking at our numbers in this option, Elkins would, would, you know, decline and be right between, you know, 90 and 100%. High Tower would increase right to about capacity, 101, 103. Marshall would increase to 84% and then trend back down a little bit. Willow Ridge, 56, 60, 60, 75%. And then looking at Ridge Point, 108%, 99, 91, 83, 74, and then right back up. 80, 87, 93, 100, 107, 115. So what does this do? This moves the, the northern portion of the current Ridge Point, Ridge Point boundary to either Elkins or High Tower. The less developed southern portion would remain at Ridge Point. It does increase our utilization at Marshall and Willow Ridge, but again, it would likely require some extensive, extensive changes again when high school 12 opens. Okay, option four. So what this option does is Quail Valley moves to Marshall. Vicksburg and Lake Olympia would move to Willow Ridge. High Tower would remain the same in this area, so we'd have Parks, Goodman, and Burton all feeding to High Tower. What this does is this takes the natural boundary of Sienna Parkway, and all students west of Sienna Parkway would feed Baines, Elkins, and east of Sienna Parkway would feed to Baines and High Tower. This would cause perhaps some elementary splits because those elementary schools do traverse Sienna Parkway, but that's something that could be looked at as we look at future elementary schools in that area as well. The boundary for Ridge Point would be the same, that southern portion of its current boundary. So looking at the numbers here, again, we're a little bit overutilized at Elkins, so we would get to 103% and 110% in 28-29. One consideration here is that we, we still have that Engineering Academy at Elkins. Were that, were that academy to relocate to a different school, we'd be right at 100% at Elkins in this particular scenario. High Tower, between 80 and 90, gets up to 96%. Marshall, again, up to 84%, and then comes down a little bit. Willow Ridge, we get up into the low 70s. Ridge Point, same as the last option, 80, or 108, 99, down to 74, and then right back up. So again, what does this do? Again, this moves the northern portion to either Elkins or High Tower. Less developed southern portion would remain at, would remain at Ridge Point. Utilizes the natural boundary of Sienna Parkway to divide students between Elkins and High Tower, and it does create some feeder splits. Does increase utilization at Marshall and Willow Ridge, but again, would likely require extensive rezoning when high school 12 opens. Okay. That's high schools.
Did we have any questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Leopold. We appreciate the, the presentation. I'm sorry, Mrs. James. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Berdine. I have one question for you, Mr. Leopold. In those options that you showed in the elementaries with the additions, the additions that are in the bond you included in those?
Yes.
And the ones that were not in the bond, you listed separately. So some of them had it. All those scenarios had a couple of additions that were not in the 2018 bond. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I showed it, I showed the data both ways.
Okay, okay. And then my, thank you. And then my next question is for you, Mrs. Martinez, or I have a couple of questions. One is the maps and everything that he showed today, that's on the website for people to, to view or to get?
It is not yet, but it will be tomorrow. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's good. And then what, could you just say again, what's happening to the feedback? People have feedback. You're collecting that through Let's Talk, I guess, or there's a portal for that? Could you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. There's significant feedback that, that comes through Let's Talk, and that's, we were able to capture that, categorize it, and use it as part of the information that we review and consider. The structured survey begins tomorrow, and we'll continue to capture feedback through Let's Talk, but also through the online survey. And the, we want to direct people toward that online survey, so, one, they can learn more about the options by, by viewing them online or in person at the community meetings. And then, two, they can give very specific feedback. Sometimes or often, the feedback that we get through Let's Talk is, is prior to a deep level of, of engagement around the, the data and the information, and also includes I like it or I don't like it type feedback. But we're encouraging the community to really look at the information and provide feedback on each of the options, and even to the, to the level of some of the specific changes, so that when we do study that, that feedback at a deep level and consider it, we'll have feedback that is deep and meaningful, and it, it could come back to you all in a boundary recommendation that takes parts and pieces of, of what you've seen tonight based on feedback we received from the community.
Thank you, Mrs. James. And Mrs. Tallson?
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. So I appreciated that last comment, because that was going to be my question, is that, are we asking for feedback on only these four options presented for each, in each area? Or are we encouraging additional comments or additional feedback that may not be exactly as presented?
Yes, on the second part of your question, we will ask for their feedback on the particular options that are shown, but then broaden that for open-ended comments and specific feedback on questions or concerns similar to the, the way that the focus group interacted.
And if I could just add, because of the complexity of a lot of these options, we'll be kind of taking them apart and say, hey, how do you feel about the option overall?